You've got two more minutes to talk. We'll make room. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the time and place for, uh, for important jobs development authority.
Weigel.
Here.
Wasowski.
Here.
Weather.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
Mary Bucinski.
Here.
We have a call.
Very good. Thanks. Item 2.1 sale of Corporate Center 1. Mr. Gossard.
Thank you. Members of the JDA, I want to go over, um, uh, the, what's being asked for tonight, uh, with respect to the Corporate Center 1 sale. Uh, first thing, just, there's a lot of things that are in that staff report, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware as to what the ask is. Uh, first is to, for tonight is to approve the purchase price, uh, that has been, uh, that we'll go over in a bit. Second is to approve, uh, the tenant's notice of intent to exercise the options. That's attachment three, uh, in the staff report. Third is to approve a document that actually exercises, uh, that option and then assigns those purchase rates to a third party. Subject, however, to review and approval of the city attorney's office that has not been finalized yet. Third is to approve a purchase agreement, uh, for the purchase of Corporate Center 2. Again, that has not been finalized and that would be subject to final review and approval by, uh, city attorney's office. And then a short-term extension of the current leases for the tenants that are in Corporate Center 1, uh, at this point. Approximately about a four-month period of time to extend or the date of closing of the sale, whichever would occur first. Just to provide some background information, um, leases were entered into by Alaris, um, I guess it was formerly the First National Realty Corporation, uh, Brady Martz, and also the Camerun Law Office. Those are attachments number one to the staff report. Those leases allowed the tenants two options to renew, um, and they all exercised both of those options. What that means is that currently the leases have an expiration date, uh, for Alaris and Brady Martz, uh, October 31 of this year, and for the law firm, November 30th, uh, of this year. In connection with the leases, uh, each of those parties also entered into what I would describe as, as option agreements. All three of those agreements were recorded against the real estate, um, and what it did is it provided each of the parties an option to acquire their respective share or their leased space within Corporate 1 and also a portion of the common space as well. The option period, uh, was based upon the commencement date of their respective leases. And the commencement date to the leases are the earlier of 30 days of their occupancy, um, or when they opened up for, uh, business, uh, whichever occurred first. We believe that, that those, uh, that commencement date would have been the fall of 99, October, November timeframe. But the, none of the tenants could exercise the option no sooner than 21 years after the commencement date, so that would have been the fall of 2020, and no later than 23 years after the commencement date, which would be the fall of this year. All three of the tenants, Alaris, Brady Martz, and, and the law firm, do want to exercise the options to purchase. They want to do so jointly, collectively, and simultaneously, um, so that they would acquire all of the building at once. Um, you know, you could run into a situation, maybe one of them exercised the option, but the others didn't. They want to exercise, all of them want to exercise together. They also want to then, um, assign that right, once they exercise those purchase rights, to a third party. Uh, the third party is Edward, Edgewood Properties Triple LP. Uh, and that, uh, assignment would be jointly and collectively and simultaneous with the exercise of their options. So there would be no time period, uh, from the time they exercise the option to the time they, they assign those purchase rights. They'd exercise and immediately, uh, transfer those purchase rights to that third party. The third party then, under that scenario, would own Corporate 1 and then lease it back to the three tenants. Under the option agreements, which again are attachment number two, it does describe in section 1.03 what the purchase price is to be if, if a, uh, if the option is exercised. That section, that calculation, that method is complicated, um, but it, and it's not entirely, um, without ambiguity. It contemplates that the sale price would be something less than the fair market value. There will be a deduction, uh, from the fair market value of the property, and that's in recognition of the fact that those three tenants came down, uh, after the flood when things were, um, in dire straits as far as the downtown area, and they committed to come to downtown, they, to revitalize it after the flood. And so that was the, the, uh, basis for the reduction. The calculation of the purchase price in very basic terms is you start out with the fair market value of Corporate Center 1, and you, there are two deductions. The deduction has two components to it. One is one-half of what's called the appreciation value after full recovery of what's defined as the initial equity. The second component of the deduction is an interest component of two and a half percent for the length of the lease, and that would be 23 years in this set of circumstances. The, the option agreements, use the term, term "initial equity," that's actually defined in the option agreement. And for purposes of Corporate Center 1, uh, and that's also in section 1.03, it's a little short of $5.4 million is what's described as the initial equity. The fair market value, um, after having discussions with the tenants over the last several months, was concluded the fair market value, uh, would be $6,972,359. I want to talk about that fair market value because about a year ago, or a little over a year ago, the city did, uh, engage appraisal services, uh, to give us an appraisal, and that appraisal came in at $7,500,000 effective as of April 6th, 2021. However, in, since that appraisal, uh, this board, this, uh, the JDA sold Corporate Center 2 for a little over $2,500,000. And in Corporate Center 2, there's a little over 22,000, uh, square feet of net rentable square feet, so that arrives at about $113 per square foot value. And so if you apply that net rentable square foot to what's in Corporate 1, which is, uh, a little short of 61,800 square feet, you get to that $6,972,000 figure. And it just, in, in discussing with the administration, uh, it seemed reasonable to use that number as the fair market value because it's a sale of a peer building. Um, and so that would be the starting point. Then, with respect to the purchase price, is that's the starting point for the purchase price is the fair market value, and then we do the deduction. Um, and this is, if you take a look at page four of the staff report, I'd go through the calculation, uh, for you. You take the appreciation and value, um, and that, after having several meetings with the tenants and reviewing it and, and attempting to come up with what we believe to be a reasonable interpretation of this purchase, uh, price under section 1.03, you take that fair market value number, that $6.9 million number, and you deduct that initial equity of the 5.4 to arrive at a number that's about $1,580,000. You take 50% of that, 50% of the appreciation and value to get to about $780,000. And then you, um, also apply interest, and the, and the language says you're to apply interest thereon, and the term "thereon," we believe, refers to that $780, or $790,000 figure. And so at two and a half percent over 23 years on the $790,000 figure, uh, gets to about $454,000. So you've got two components of the deduction. First is that $790,000, one-half of the appreciation and value, and the interest on there. Um, and so the total deduction is $1,244,000 and some change. So if you take then the fair market value of the 6.8 million, or 6.9 million or so, and you deduct that $1,244,000, you arrive at a figure of $5,728,311. Just to point out that the city had reviewed this several years ago, a prior interpretation of this particular section, and the reason I included that, that's in page five of the staff report, the reason I included that is to demonstrate that the interpretation that we're using seems to be more reasonable than, than what was done before because, under the interpretation the city had previously applied, it actually creates a premium over fair market value, um, because of the way the deduction worked and, and the way they're reviewing it. It causes the value, or the purchase price to be, uh, about $7.7 million, which was about $700,000 more than even what the appraisal came in at. So I, I point that out only to show that we believe that the interpretation that, that got us to that $5.7 million figure is a reasonable interpretation of this particular section. From that number, um, the, the, uh, tenants had also provide, provided a, a, um, property inspection report. That's attachment number six, that noted a number of items that, uh, they were looking at as far as needed to be repairs, of which there's a little over $26,000 that required immediate attention, and we thought it would be reasonable to, uh, give that as a credit or a deduction to the purchase price. So at the end of the day, uh, what you'd be approving tonight is the purchase price of $5,702,248. With that, what we, given the fact that the tenants wanted to assign, wanted to exercise the options collectively and immediately assign those, those exercised options, those exercised rights to buy, we didn't want to have to renegotiate with their, with their assinee, um, the purchase price, what the purchase agreement looked for, looked like, or their obligations to assume the, the purchase, uh, of Corporate Center 1. And so what we did is we've, over the course of the last several months, um, there is a document that, that has been, it's attachment number three, it's their notice of intent by the tenants, that is not the exercise of the option. It just is their statement that they intend to exercise the, the option. They intend to do so jointly, collectively, and simultaneously, they, to purchase all of Corporate Center 1, um, that they would, there are some coupling agreements because Corporate Center 2 and Corporate Center 1 are connected with respect to some heating in the skyway. There'd be an assignment of, uh, agreements dealing with the, the skyway and the common heating agreements that were in place when we sold Corporate Center 2. It sets out the purchase price in that notice of intent. And then also that, that the document that where they actually exercised their option would be negotiated in good faith, um, but that would require, uh, again, a joint exercise, an immediate, in a joint assignment, and the acceptance of their assinee or the buyer of the property to assume all the obligations for the purchase. That, um, notice of intent also provides that it's subject to that exercise agreement, um, once we get it developed. The exercise document, I have draft, I've got a draft version, that's attachment number four. Again, it also contemplates the joint simultaneous exercise of the options, the joint and simultaneous assignments, so the, the, uh, three tenants would execute that document as would the buyer. And once all those parties have executed that, it would, uh, vest the option, it would have been exercised and the assignment would have occurred. And that document also provides that the buyer assumes all of the obligations to buy, including the purchase price. There is a default provision, uh, within that agreement right now. Uh, one of the things that the tenants have, have asked for is that if by chance the, the buy, their buyer, uh, would happen to default in, you know, after the options are exercised, the purchase agreement has been executed, if that buyer would happen to default, they may want to get their right to buy, uh, back, uh, property from, from that buyer. I don't necessarily think that's unreasonable, um, you know, give them a period of, a short period of time to get those, uh, purchase rights reassigned to them. Also attached to the staff report is attachment number five, is purchase agreement. That mirrors the purchase agreement for Corporate 2 with the exception that it's being sold as-is. There are some matters that are still going to be coupled with respect to the city's ownership of the parking garage that's next to it. There is a, a document that's, um, attachment number seven that describes various items that would, that potentially would have to be decoupled from the Corporate Center 1 building. That's currently being reviewed by city staff to determine, you know, which ones the city might, the JDA may want to pursue, which ones they, they don't want to pursue, and for those that we want to remain in place, we then execute what I describe as utility access agreements so that we'd be able to access those electrical panels and things like that for maintenance in the future. The other, the other, as I pointed out at the beginning of my presentation, uh, the tenants want to extend the current leases, um, under the same terms and conditions they are currently existing, um, for, you know, a three to four-month period of time or until the closing occurs, whichever would happen to occur first. So, um, again, uh, what we'd be asking for tonight is the approval of that purchase agreement, approval of the tenant's notice of intent to exercise the option, approval of the, the exercise document and assignment document itself, subject to final review and approval, uh, approval of the purchase agreement, uh, again, subject to review and final approval by, by the city attorney and that short extension of the leases. I would recommend a four-month period of time or until closing, uh, whichever, and, and one thing, we are targeting for a December closing, uh, for this, uh, property as well. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gossard. With that, I'll open a public, uh, public hearing on item 2.1, sale of Corporate Center 1. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from, uh, JDA members? Mr. Sandy, President Sandy.
Mr. Gossard, is there a specific motion you're looking for tonight? Do you want a series of motions or just, uh, authorize the sale and execution of the agreement subject to the city attorney's review and approval? I do. There is a specific, thank you for asking. There is a specific motion. It is to approve the purchase price, to approve the tenant's notice of intent to exercise the option, to approve the, um, exercise and assignment document, subject to city attorney review, to approve the purchase agreement, subject to city attorney, uh, final, uh, review and approval, and to extend the current leases under the same terms for a period of up to four months, or the date of closing, whichever occurs first. Great. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. And we have a second from Ms. Wasowski. Mr. Gossard, the reassignment of purchase that you discussed, that would be at the currently calculated and negotiated price, or would that be reopened?
If, if, you're talking if their buyer would happen to default, yeah, everything would, nothing would change. It would be, all be under the same terms and conditions that, that would be approved tonight.
Very good. And the, uh, short-term, uh, four-month extension, does that require a legal document or can that be done informally?
It would be, I, I would, uh, once I get the approval, I would prepare a very short document that would simply export the terms and it would say, you're, you're still subject to all the same terms and conditions. The rent's the same, uh, the, uh, common expenses are the same, um, so it would be fairly short.
Very good. Uh, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 2.2, startup loan request, Try It On LLC. Mr. Lund, please.
Chairman Weber, Mary Bucinski, uh, pleasure to be here this evening, um, to present two startup grant folks loan applications. If it pleases the Chair, I'd like to just, before we get into the applications, I'd like to just quickly review the program since we haven't been here talking, at this body talking for a while, and my apologies to the growth funding committee members who heard this, uh, week ago.
It's good for all of us, all of us to hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As, uh, the program Startup Grant Focus was approved about three years ago, and the goal was to support the early-stage companies in Grant Forks, to support and increase entrepreneurship. Uh, we spent a lot of time on the financial aspects of the program and how that would work, but mentorship was a key aspect of the program. Spent a lot of time putting those relationships together, Small Business Development Center Score, and, and other entrepreneurs were just some of the groups that came to bear to help support these companies that, that were looking for, for, um, for funding, but not all received that. A loan review committee was established. It was a mayoral initiative, prior mayor, and the loan committee was established to include three local entrepreneurs, a local lender, an all-true physician, a UND professor of entrepreneurship, a staff member of the UND Center for Innovation, and a member of the UND student-led Dakota Venture Group. The program, uh, was previously administered by a former EDC staffer, Brandon Bonbok, but really not in his capacity as a member of the EDC, but in his capacity as a president of Revolve Grant Forks was, is an organization that was created to support, uh, entrepreneurship in our community. When staff and guests in this case, uh, in the previous case was Mr., um, Mr. Bonbok, believes that the applicant is ready, and a lot of work goes into it before that time, a meeting of this loan for me, uh, review committee is convened. For the two applicants that you hear this evening, um, the initial meeting that elicits critique, uh, from the, uh, from the committee members, and results in revisions of the business plan and financial projections, so improving the business product before we move it forward. Uh, over the, over the, at least the last two months, and truly closer to three, uh, both entrepreneurs have advised their business plans and those financial projections. Uh, we actually had three applications the growth funding committee considered, uh, two of those the committee felt were ready to move forward, so one they did not. Um, and as a matter of fact, um, just to let you know that Mr. Bonbok before his departure had mentioned that only about 25% of the applications are the people that visited with him, or the businesses that visit with him about this program ever made it to this point. So there was a lot of screening, a lot of introduction to mentorship, and, you know, not all businesses are ready to take that, to take that final step. Um, you know, the discussions, uh, you know, this is several years ago, this discussion about maybe providing grants, but at the end of the day, a loan was determined to be the appropriate way forward. Settle on a debt instrument, and the terms of the program are a five-year term, uh, one year, no payment, no interest, uh, 5%, uh, principal interest payments on the remaining four years. A corporate guarantee is required and, uh, but no personal guarantees. It's betting on the entrepreneur and the business that's in front of us. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll go into Try It On.
Yes, please.
Unless there are questions. Hearing none. Um, I'm pleased to introduce Savannah Simmers, the founder of Try It On. Savannah has developed a web application to enhance the local shopping experience. Try It On is a web plugin that allows shoppers to view clothing, store offerings, select those items similar to how you would if you were, um, adding to your cart for online shopping, and schedules a fitting room within a few days to try on the apparel and accessories that they have selected. Savannah described this as a bridge between online shopping and, uh, local, and shopping local, which we all would like to see more of, of course. Uh, Try It On customers are clothing stores, the, the boutique, with the focus on boutique retailers. Retailer buys a subscription, and then the retailer provides that service to their customers. Savannah has worked with Shopify, the world's leading online shopping platform, and expects to launch, launch on that platform in the next three months. She's seeking financing through the Startup Grant Forks Loan Program to complete the work on the web plugin to, to enable that launch. She will invest over $70,000 of resources and is seeking a startup loan in the amount of $30,000. Provided an application, which include the application itself and some key findings. Business plan, financial projections, and other information were sent under a separate cover due to confidential, uh, nature of those documents. Uh, the startup loan committee first met with Savannah in June and provided feedback and advice, and she worked over several months, again, to refine her business venture along with her finer business plan. One of the things that which suggested that Savannah did was to identify some beta testers to demonstrate that there are retailers out there, boutiques that thought that this was a good idea. Um, we all think we have great ideas, and it's great to hear from industry or the people that you're going to be working with and selling to that it's a good idea. So she's done that. Uh, she then met with a review committee in September, and they recommended moving forward to this. So the growth fund committee met last Monday, reviewed it, Savannah did a very nice presentation, there was unanimous approval, um, unanimous recommendation for approval of this loan here this evening. Savannah's here, and she's very happy, I'm sure, to, if you have any questions, as am I, and I'll include my comments at that time, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. London, and welcome, Ms. Simmers. Uh, open, uh, public hearing on item 4.2. Does anyone wish to speak to item 2, uh, 2.2, startup loan request, Try It On LLC? Hearing none, I'll, uh, close item, uh, 2 points, uh, the public hearing on item 2.2. Any questions or comments from, uh, committee members?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion for Mr. Weigel.
Second.
Second for Mr. Cavami. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 2.2 passes unanimously. Thanks, congratulations. Uh, item 2.3, startup loan request, Noor Malaysian Kitchen LLC. Mr. Lund.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to introduce Noor Abu Aziz. I'm sure I got that pretty close, and her husband, and her husband Garrett Glass, who are the owners of Noor's Malaysian Kitchen. Uh, Noor's Malaysian Kitchen, uh, many of you have encountered them, I imagine. They're a mobile kitchen offering authentic Malaysian cuisine. They all accounts, they have a very popular, uh, cuisine and are among the longest lines at events, at farmer, events like Farmer's Market, Greenway Takeover, and other regional festivals. I can attest to both, and both in terms of the quality of food and the long lines. Uh, their current setup makes it very difficult to operate in certain weather conditions as they're not equipped with important cooking equipment that will allow for faster preparation of food to increase sales. Uh, they've been operating their business out of an inefficient food trailer for the last two years, and their goal is to purchase a new food truck with all necessary equipment to meet their needs, and this is a brand-new truck, uh, fully equipped and to meet our local codes. Uh, this will allow them to not only increase sales at festival types of events, but offer meals for delivery throughout the week. Um, their long-term plan is to open a Malaysian restaurant, so this is a step along the way. Um, a summary of the food truck and costs is included in, with their application packet. Uh, their business plan and financial projections, tax returns, and the like were sent under separate cover. The cost of food truck and other equipment is about $56,000. Uh, Noor and Garrett are seeking a $30,000 startup loan and will invest $26,000, uh, themselves. Uh, similar to the previous application, startup loan already commuted, uh, reviewed this request in July and provided feedback and advice. Uh, Noor and Garrett worked over this time to, again, move their business forward and revise their business plan and projections. One of the things that they were asked to do is really to capture the sales this year to validate what their projections are next year, and they did a really nice job of that, which looks like they'll be successful based on their sales, and then if you apply, you know, faster, more efficient cooking, um, you know, that looks, uh, looks like that's going to be successful. Uh, they met with a review committee again after making those enhancements in September, and again, the review committee recommended moving it to this body. Uh, growth committee, uh, fund committee met last week on Monday and unanimously recommended approval to this body today. I mentioned in my earlier remarks that, uh, in terms of guaranteeing loans, it's corporately guaranteed, but not personally guaranteed, and collateral typically isn't provided. But in this case, because the Startup Grant Forks loan funding is actually purchasing a tangible asset, Noor and Garrett are offering that brand-new, fully-equipped, licensed food truck as collateral for this loan. Um, I mentioned Noor and Garrett are here. I'm sure they're very happy to ha, answer any questions that you have, as would I, and thank you for your time.
Thank you again, Mr. London, and welcome, Ms. Aziz and, and Mr. Brock. Um, with that, I'll open a public hearing on item 2.3, startup loan request, Noor Malaysian Kitchen LLC. Does anyone wish to speak on this item? Hearing from no one, I'll close public hearing. Uh, JDA members, any questions or comments? Motion for Mr. Cavami, second for Ms. Lunskey. Um, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 2.3 passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you. Um, item 2.4, accelerate and startup program, temporary suspension. Ms. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Um, as you may recall, we discussed this at, at the September JDA meeting, um, staff coming forward basically with an overview of, of these two programs that are considered our high-risk portfolio, and the recognition that we had reached the funding cap that had been established for these. Um, kind of the upshot of that discussion was the, uh, committee agreed to hear the two startup applications that had been in the pipeline and that you just approved now. Um, when those went to growth fund committee last week, their recommendation was to approve those two specific applications, but also in terms of the, the broader programs, um, the recommendation was to temporarily suspend both the startup and the accelerate loan programs and to convene a, what we're calling a strategic planning working group to, uh, instead of just revising the program descriptions for these two loan programs to address the cap, uh, more of a big-picture approach to really look at some of the many things that are changing with the growth fund portfolio, um, economic conditions region-wide, um, really give some good context to the programs that we're providing in support of our priorities and how these two programs fit. Once we get through that, then we'll worry about the details of program descriptions and how to update those. So the request, um, tonight is to suspend both of those programs on a temporary basis I think attached to this item is a list of recommended members. Mr. London and I have, between the two of us, contacted all nine of those recommended members, and with your concurrence tonight, we'll start convening. Certainly happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Richards. And with that, I'll open a public hearing on item 2.4, Accelerate and Startup Program Temporary Suspension. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Call to order, welcome everybody.
J D A members, questions or comments on this item?
Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, October 3, 2022.
Mr. Vien, please.
Get a roll call, please, Marine.
Motion for approval, we have a motion for approval from Mr. Vien, and a second from
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Ms. Osowski.
Here.
Any further comments or questions?
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Here.
Kavami.
Here.
Aye.
Sandy.
Opposed, same sign.
Here.
Motion passes.
And Vien.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Here.
Motion for Mr. Sandy, quickly seconded by Ms. Osowski, all in favor signify by saying
All present, we have a call.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
aye.
all.
Aye.
Item 1.3, got a few announcements today.
Meeting's adjourned. Thanks.
We're here if we could just pause in between the two meetings here.
Yep.
Busy couple of weeks, was happy to get over to Alara Center for Oktoberfest. Not only was my brother-in-law playing in the band there, Matt and the Dakota Dutchman, but it was a fundraiser for Valley Senior Living Foundation. Just a great time, everyone had a good time, even got to participate in a Steinholding contest for the first time. It was a it was a great day. U N D homecoming last week, nice to see the football team and the hockey team won, and they had the pep rally down in Town Square, which was great. Grand Forks last week and going into the weekend hosted Grand Forks, or the League of Cities for the first time, at least since I've been mayor, so that was great to to get over there and see all the different city leaders from across the state here in Grand Forks. So definitely want to thank the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Greater Grand Forks, they call themselves now for the work they did, Skies and Cloud Nine for hosting that reception, and the Alara Center for hosting the event. They did a great job. We got over to St. Paul's Episcopal Church, they had their 150th anniversary, history just as long as the city itself, so was happy to be over there, attend service with them and take part of that celebration. Just this week, the Nissler College, or just last week, the Nissler College had their grand opening. That was a strategic investment by the board that was just sitting here, the J D A. Great to see that building come to fruition. Upcoming this week, starting tomorrow, we've got the U A S Summit, so if you've got your tickets, head over to the U A S Summit at the Alara Center. The Community Foundation's going to have their gratitude gathering. And then upcoming, I'll be going out to Virginia. I'm actually going to miss the next city council meeting, President Sandy's going to have to take over for me. I will be out in Virginia, visiting Air Combat Command with Air Force leadership. We're going to have a really good showing from the community. President Armikost will be there, Colonel Curry will be there, the county will be there, and the chamber leadership will be there, so should be a great, great event, great couple of weeks coming up, and a great few days out there in Virginia. With that, I believe that's all I've got for mayor's announcements, so we're moving on to two citizen comments. You got some comments, Ms. Luntmark?
I do. Roland Reimers.
Mr. Reimers, are you here? Can please take the mic and, I see him, there he is. Mr. Reimers, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Roland Reimers, 1024 University. Now, I'm here to again complain as I have over the years about the non-enforcement of our train ordinance in Grand Forks. Under city ordinance and also under state law, there's a 10-minute limit that a train can block an intersection, and in the city ordinance of Grand Forks, it says it must be absolutely necessary to block that intersection, not if it's key inconvenient or not, but if absolutely necessary. Well, on the 25th of September, driving through Grand Forks, I noticed the train on 42nd Street North, just north of Demers, a dead stop, so I, just out of curiosity, started timing it. 19 minutes later, we're still at a dead stop, so I called 911. The police said, well, we'll call the train master if they try to figure out what's going on. They never got back to me, because they never got hold of train master. The next day, I complained to the police, they didn't even know what the our ordinance was, you know? Absolutely necessary is a high bar to meet, but they didn't even know that the ordinance was there. And they again checked with the train master, the train master said, well, we had to, absolutely needed to to keep the train stopped right there. And I asked the police, well, we, oh, hey, you know, what was the reason that was absolutely necessary? Well, they didn't say. I talked to the city attorney to see, you know, what was necessary to prosecute it. They went and talked to me, they said, hey, it's up to the police. I went over to talk to the train master, the train master said, well, our schedules are kind of followed up, it would have possibly caused a collision someplace out of town, so therefore it was absolutely necessary. Well, hey, that's a scheduling problem. And were there ways around that scheduling problem? I think there was. The train itself, the engine was restbound, the engine was sitting right underneath the I-29 bridge, there was about 300 feet there between that and the train crossing. They could have backed up 300 feet into the rail yard and allowed traffic to pass. There was about a mile of track in front of them that has no cross-sections, they could have gone forward, I don't know how long the train was, but maybe that wasn't an option. But also, they could have decoupled the train right at the intersection, made about a 50-foot move of the engine forward, and that would have cleared the intersection for traffic to get through, and I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to couple and decouple the a train. It should have been fairly easy to do. But I think the city ought to start enforcing their city ordinance or just eliminate it if you're not going to enforce it. I mean, how would you feel if tomorrow I decided it's absolutely necessary for me to block Demers Avenue in the middle of the street, park my car there, because I find it, well, absolutely necessary? Do you think the cops would believe it? No. I think you should instruct your police to enforce this ordinance as well as the state law. Thank you. Any questions or?
No, thank you, Mr. Reimers. We know that intersection has been a problem for a long time, and I had no idea the trains were there that long, and that we had this ordinance, so it's good to know, so I appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Reimers?
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Jason Patrick.
Mr. Patrick, please. Good evening. Normally, it seems I come up here with a bit of prepared words. Unfortunately, I don't have my script with me tonight, and I will try to be brief. There is a couple of things that I want to discuss or put out to you, recommend, suggest, however you want to look at it. While my staunch opposition to certain projects will not waver, sometimes I find it necessary to maybe take a different tact and see where I might be able to achieve some victories. Old saying within the SEER community, small victories, they add up. Looking at the sale price of the land for the annexation area for the Fu Feng project at $26,000 an acre, and then the subsequent sale price to us to buy some of that land back, somewhere in the ballpark of $17,000 to $16,000, I'll just say 17,000 for round numbers and ease of computation. And then you compare that to what the USDA, arguably, some people could have a different view on it, but what the USDA on the high-end rates some of the best farmland in this state as costing, somewhere in the ballpark of $3,800 to $5,000 an acre. I want you to hang on to that information just for a second. There's a term in my industry called the Oodaloop. Observe, orient, decide, and act. You got to get into your enemy's Oodaloop. Well, our adversaries got into your Oodaloop, and they've decided to orient, to observe, orient, decide, and act, and picking out where they've decided to put plants based off of their own wants and desires and needs. You guys haven't really done that with them, so I'll put it this way. I've done a bit of that. China's in a situation, they cannot sustain their people agriculturally, food. They don't have a high amount of arable land that they can readily farm, and so somewhere in the ballpark of 70% to 75% of their soybean consumption comes from imports, okay? So we're in an interesting position, and I'm just going to give you this thought strategy. We're in an interesting position where we have a lot of leverage. We have something they want. We've got issues as a nation with them. We have issues in this community with what's going on. If you guys are going to be hell-bent for leather to continue with this project in any way, shape, or form, or fashion, whether through bending and twisting of the definition of not working or continuing any construction process, projects, and that's a different topic for a different time, might I recommend to you, exercise that leverage, utilize that ammunition you have in your belt and your armory, that tool in your toolbox, to get that price down below that $17,000 to $16,000 per acre, and a good bit closer to what the FDA recommended amount is. If you're going to push and you're going to bring them into our backyard, at least let's get an actual deal out of this. That's my recommendation to you. And the one last thing I wanted to talk about, when, and this is just a recommendation from a man who made his living interpreting regulations and keeping leaders and commanders out of the crosshairs of U C M J by making sure they understood the regulations and the technical manuals, when you're going to quote law or say something is as per North Dakota State law, might I highly recommend, cute little parentheses at the end of that statement, title number, chapter and section number. That way, the public can actually reference the law that you're referring to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Dennis Cadlock.
Mr. Cadlock, please.
Thank you. Choose ye today whom you're going to follow, the Lord or Satan. You know, it's kind of funny, the Chinese use a dragon for their symbol, we use an eagle, UK uses a lion. Well, Satan also uses a dragon for his symbol. So you got two choices, are you got good or you got evil? And evidently, the choice has been pretty well-made here, and you're going to have to live with these choices for eternity. You know, right now, I can see that the Lord's separating the sheep from the goats, the wheat from the chaff, and people are making their decisions where they want to spend the rest of their eternity. China needs to colonize more land, they do not have enough land. It was determined between them and Russia that when things are done, what they'll divide up is they'll give Russia back to Alaska, most of Canada, and the Chinese are going to get the U.S. and the other part of Canada. Our governor, I found last week, has purchased 500 to 600 acres of land north of East Grand Forks, 8,000 to 9,000 per acre. Now, I would guess that's probably where the Viking pipeline's going to come through, just as Bill Gates purchased that land north where the pipeline from Canada is going to come through. And I would think there's something wrong with this, and it's with the Bitcoin mining. Again, we've had more outages in Grand Forks again to the Bitcoin mining, and people here believe they're going to actually get paid out of Bitcoin mining. The Chinese created Bitcoin mining only to deceive the rest of the world in following their program. It's costing more and more every day to mine more Bitcoin, it's getting more expensive, not cheaper. People are borrowing money on this. When they're unable to pay these loans, the banks are going to fail. When the banks are going to fail, everything goes, and quite a few of you have been deceived by China. They're very good, they're much smarter than the United States when it comes to planning things out. They've been planning this for well over 200 years. They stipulated six, 16 years ago, 20 years ago, that they needed new lands colonized, and that's what they're going to have to do, is colonize new lands, and they've already chose what lands they want to do. And people are sticking up for the council, saying you guys are being thrown under the bus by our governor and some of the senators. No, you guys crawled under the bus on your own, and when the wheels fall off, don't be too surprised, because if this thing does fly, it's going to blow up in everybody's face. And we've seen that from previous things that have been done by this administration or other administrations. And you people are supposed to be serving the people, not doing as you wish, or working out your own agenda for future plans. And if you can think you can actually trust the Chinese, look back on everything else they done. A matter of fact, you know, this would be a good paper review people describes to, right here, China, Russia, nuclear threat to U.S., you know? I don't know if you guys have a problem with hearing, don't know if you got a problem with reading, or you got a problem praying, but you know, there's only one God, and you either choose him or you choose Satan, there's no third choice. And China's a very poor one to choose, especially when you're running for reelection. And you can continue on your path, but you're choosing this path on your own. So choose ye today whom you're going to follow, the Lord or the alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Cadlock.
Sheila Spicer.
Ms. Spicer, please.
Sheila Spicer, Grand Forks. I've just got very short, I won't do your five minutes at all, and I'm sure you've all read it, it's G A A S I opposes new Chinese egg project in Grand Forks, September 20, 2022. Are drones out there that you guys are also involved in? Everybody's out there right now, hoping everybody with the drones. San Diego, September 20, 2022, General Atomics Aeronautical Systems Incorporated, a leading designer and manufacturer of unmanned aircraft systems for United States and Allied forces around the world, firmly oppose a new Chinese agricultural plant near the Grand Forks Air Force Base, North Dakota, and calls on the United States government to halt the project now. You guys are backing these drones, and you are allowing this to come in? There's more stuff out there right now in the news that I can't believe. I said I'm going to put stupid on every one of your foreheads, because we are in the news, we're looking, you guys are looking terrible. Every place you open up is going on about China and how we don't want it, the government doesn't want it, the feds don't want it, and you guys keep going. It's just ridiculous. Another thing, you commented, Brandon, to Jody, that you did not need those 370 acres for Fu Feng.
Excuse me, say it again?
You commented to Jody when you were driving to Minneapolis, she commented about why Fu Feng needed 370 acres, and you said to annexes, and you said, no, they didn't, because all of a sudden...
Sheila Spicer, Grand Forks. I've described very short, I won't do your five minutes at all, and I'm sure you've all read it. It's G A A S I opposes new Chinese egg project in Grand Forks, September 20, 2022. Are drones out there that you guys are also involved in? Everybody's out there right now, hoping everybody with the drones. San Diego, September 20, 2022. General Atomics Aeronautical Systems Incorporated, a leading designer and manufacturer of unmanned aircraft systems for United States and allied forces around the world, firmly oppose a new Chinese agricultural plant near the Grand Forks Air Force Base, North Dakota, and calls on the United States government to halt the project now. You guys are backing these drones and you are allowing this to come in? There's more stuff out there right now in the news that I can't believe. I said I'm gonna put stupid on every one of your foreheads. Because we are in the news, we're looking, you guys are looking terrible. Every place you open up is going on about China and how we don't want it, the government doesn't want it, the feds don't want it, and you guys keep going. It's just ridiculous. Another thing, you commented, Brandon, to Jody that you did not need those 370 acres for Fu Feng.
Excuse me, say it again?
You commented to Jody when you were driving to Minneapolis. She commented about why Fu Feng needed 370 acres. And you said to annex us, and you said, no, they didn't. Because all of a sudden, annexation was done and they buy back 17 acres. Well, the comment was, how did Fu Feng know to buy 370 acres, giving them 77% of the annexation area, which blocked property owners from reaching the 25% needed to protest the annexation? Who told them to go buy? They bought optional 7 acres. They had to have the 370 acres and everybody knows it. And you said they didn't. You commented to-
I don't know what comment you're talking about. They worked with private landowners to purchase that, they did not work with anybody else. So I don't know why they chose that, ma'am.
370 acres to annex us, so we couldn't be annexed.
I don't know why they chose that, ma'am.
And everybody knows it, and I will find Jody's comment, I read the whole thing. You were on your way to Minneapolis to a family emergency, when you were texting her back, all these things on her text. Another thing, I just spoke, it is Viking Gas Line, right, that's coming in? Because I have somebody that I know that works there. They were wondering, it's coming in for Fu Feng, I was told. He said Fu Feng is what's bringing the gas line in? And he said, um, do they still, is it Fu Feng paying for it, or are you guys paying for it? I wanna know who's paying for the gas line coming in.
The city's not paying for the gas line.
Fu Feng is paying for the whole gas line, no money, no COVID money that's invested, nothing in it?
The gas pipeline that would come here has capacity far beyond Fu Feng. So it would be serving them as well as other aspects of the community. It's, the state is gonna have proposed paying for some through legislation.
That's what I wanna know.
And the company is paying for the largest portion of it.
All right, I just wanted to know that you guys, okay, but you're putting money in it. Fu Feng's not?
We're not putting, no.
The city's not, but the state is and the federal is?
The state has chosen to put money to bring a gas pipeline, which would increase capacity far beyond what Fu Feng would be using, so that we have excess gas-
For the agro-industrial part.
For the entire county of Grand Forks.
For the ag industrial part. Okay, just wanted to know, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Craig Spicer.
Thanks for doing the family thing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Spicer, please.
Hi, how's everybody doing? I better not waste my time. First of all, who do you work for? Mr. Waggles, you know who you work for?
Citizens in Ward 1.
Rebecca? Who do you work for? The city? You work for the people that vote you in? You work for everybody that lives in this town? Mr. Webber? Just a reminder, who do you work for? Can you tell me? I didn't think so. That's the, that's the way this whole process has been? When you ask a question, you just sit there and say, this is a Hogan's Heroes movie? This is not a Hogan's Heroes movie. The stuff doesn't smell like cornflakes. We are not gonna move the Burlington Northern Railroad out of our town because you think that's a good idea. I think you've been watching too many Hogan Heroes movies. Okay. Can I ask you who you work for? You're newly elected. Would you answer that question?
Work for.
Okay. And the citizens of Grand Forks?
Yeah.
Who do you work for, Mr. Gostad?
City Council, in the city.
Yep, same thing, Mr. Spicer. Same thing all the way down.
Everybody up there, okay, great.
I can answer for them.
Just a reminder, because sometimes, nobody seems to know, because it really looks like you work more for Fu Feng, more for Fu Feng, Mr. Transparent Todd here, who's done the due diligence of covering all of his bases and covering his butt, is really what he's doing. Because every time we come here, we uncover some moves that the city has put together because they have all the resources to do that. We don't have the resources. We're here struggling to kinda keep you guys in line, and you will not stay in line. You literally say one thing and contradict it with another, time and time again. I'm gonna move on to these questions first before I run out of time. Is the, is the city an active, is there an active CFIUS review going on right now with Fu Feng?
Yes, you should be aware of that. Have you not been to the-
Just asking the question for the record. The city is preparing, proposing buying land back from Fu Feng? Why?
A stormwater retention pond, it's on the agenda to serve the annex area.
Okay, for the record, this is all for the record. Why would we propose any business dealings with a company that is currently under a federal review?
The project is halted right now. You're aware of that.
The project is halted?
Yes, you're aware of that.
Well, then why did they have a groundbreaking process out there? That was quite a, that was really a lot of fun to go watch that with their flags, and everybody out there was Asian. Can you answer me why?
Mr. Spicer, I, I, I think we've been pretty clear. The city is waiting for the CFIUS to-
Really?
To build anything.
Really? So what is this meeting going on tonight? What are these proposals here about?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, you've asked a question.
Go ahead.
Let me answer it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We have, excuse me, ma'am.
Go ahead.
We have halted city infrastructure on the project, have a CFIUS review comes back. The annexation is done, that is completed. We have to serve the annex area now. Stormwater, wastewater, police, fire, all the items.
Okay.
You know this.
Why don't we wait and why the big push to move on, on this project?
On the stormwater pond?
Any of it. Pond, infrastructure, any of it. What, why can't we stop this project? Why doesn't somebody actually stand up to what should be done and do it? You have the power to do it, Mr. Bochensky. Why are you laying back? Who's telling you what to do?
Who's telling me what to do?
Who's telling you what to do?
Who do you think-
Everybody knows that there's somebody behind us because this city council is not doing this on their own.
All right.
Last question.
Please.
In addition, there's a construction going on for a stormwater pond. Why are we not waiting on that?
I just answered that. It serves the entire annexation area.
Okay, thank you. That was all for the record. Now, we don't need a pond, okay? The committee of the whole sucks. That whole process, I don't know who started and when, but you tell me why. You sit here and you let all these engineers and all of your people that are bought and paid for, who are on the city's wages, why you sit and listen to them? But if I come to the committee's overhaul meeting, I can't say a word. How do you get an unbiased opinion when you're only getting one side of the story? Instead, I get to come here tonight, five minutes or 10 minutes or whatever that I get, and I get to propose what I'm saying. We don't need a pond, and now you guys vote on it? Doesn't mean a thing. I have no say in it, okay? As a citizen, paying taxpayer. Now, real quick, because the clock is running. We don't need a pond for four reasons. We got a diversion ditch, we got a cooling, we got a river, we got a, we got a road right there that runs through. We've never had any water issues from anybody. No water problems. We don't need the pond. The only reason you're putting the pond in is because Fu Feng needs it, and they're gonna probably use it and abuse it, okay? We don't need it. That's for the record. The other thing, wow, five minutes. Can I move on? Can I have another five minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Okay, thank you for that, too. That's about as fair as it gets, isn't it? Five minutes to sit here, that's something that you guys can talk about forever.
Please, please give up your-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for nothing.
That's all the, nope, that's all the comments I have.
All right, moving on to awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
3.1 proclamation, 3.1A is a Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through 15th, and B is White Candy, or White cane Safety Day, October 15th.
All right, thank you. Proclamation Fire Prevention Week, October 9th to the 15th. Whereas the city of Grand Forks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Grand Forks, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Whereas homes, home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the US in 2020, according to the National Fire Prevention Association. The fire departments in the US responded to 356,500 home fires. Whereas, Grand Forks first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Grand Forks residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to make personal step, to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves and reminds residents it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Now, for their, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 9th to the 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all people from Grand Forks to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week in 2022, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Grand Forks Fire Department and Emergency And proclamation, White cane Safety Day, October 15th. Whereas, the use of a white cane or dog, a guide dog is a commonly recognized and identified as mobility aids that people who are blind or have low vision rely on to travel independently. Whereas, White cane Safety Day originated through the approval of a joint resolution by Congress on October 6, 1964, which designated October 15 of each year as White cane Safety Day. And whereas, it is important to remind one another on White cane Safety Day that North Dakota traffic statutes require drivers of motor vehicles to yield the right of way to individuals utilizing a visible white cane or guide dog. Whereas, chartered as an independent nonprofit in 1936, the North Dakota Association of the Blind strongly advocates for the observance of state's white cane safety laws and the provision of white cane training for people with sight impairments so they can travel independently with confidence wherever they need to go in their daily lives. Now, therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, to hereby proclaim October 15th as White cane Safety Day, and call upon all people of Grand Forks to observe and spread awareness of issues impacting the visually impaired.
Moving on to 3.2, City Hall renovation update.
Mayor Bochensky, members of City Council, we have Sean Sennaskell's here this evening, and I know he's met with you, he's from JLG, and we thought he'd provide an overview of kinda where we're at with the concept design at this point. So with that, Sean, if you wouldn't mind letting us know where we're at.
Mr. Sennaskell, please, tell me that the sound, the audio is gonna be better than it is in here.
It's prior number one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Members of council, thank you for having me this evening. As Todd said, my name is Sean Sennaskell with JLG Architects, here to give an update on the work progress as it relates to the renovation of this room, the city council chambers. About a month ago, we held four different user group meetings. Many of you were able to attend those and give your feedback. We also, in addition, met with department leads, other members of city staff, basically to get their feedback on how the room is operating now, what improvements could be made to the space, to give us information to move forward in the design process. Couple weeks after that, we met with the mayor and Mr. Phelan to review that information that we've heard, run some design ideas by them, and additionally, get their feedback on preliminary design concepts, all with the idea of, again, giving us tools for how we can start to design the space. So with that, I'd like to just spend a couple minutes today reviewing some of the feedback that we've heard from that, as well as review some updated design concepts for your guys' benefit. You should have on the screen and at your disposal a couple pages. The first is the design concept that we'll look at today. The next page is mostly just for reference, that's the existing floor plan of the city council chambers, as mentioned, just more or less for your own reference. Just to give kind of a background, the biggest design move that we're proposing as a part of this renovation is to take this room and actually rotate it 90 degrees. The reason we're proposing doing that is a number of reasons. First is, we can better handle the columns that we have in the corner here that take up a good portion of the space. By rotating it, it allows us to create a little bit better sightlines for the audience up to the council dais. As we rotate the space, we're proposing taking out the back wall behind you guys, which would allow natural light from both the south and the east into the space, just to provide a little bit better natural light for the city council chambers. And then finally, by rotating the space, we're able to create a little bit larger lobby in the back, and so the, the single exit point could be improved so that emergency egress would be improved, as I mentioned. The next feature I'd like to highlight is the dais design. So you'll see on the screen that we're proposing kind of an oval shape for the dais. The reason we're proposing this design, if we think about how anyone conducts a business meeting today, it's a group of people centered around a table, whether that table is rectangular or circular or what have you. They're able to look across the table from one another, get business done, work on problems, and create solutions. That's what we're trying to emulate with this, call it an oval design of the dais. One of the biggest pieces of feedback that we heard is, as you guys are up here, you're having to do this to make eye contact with other members of council, try to understand body language and things of that nature. By creating more of a conference table, if you will, you're able to kinda conduct that business a little bit more seamless. So the dais proper would still host the city council, but then you can see finishing out the circle, if you will, numbers 1, 2, 3, 4, and the additional seats. Those would be seats that would be occupied by individuals like the city attorney, city administrator, the finance director, city clerk, to kinda form that, that conference room table, if you will. And then finally, we're proposing two podiums. Oftentimes, as you guys know, you'll have an individual from the private sector presenting something alongside a department head or another individual from the city. By proposing the two podiums at the front, you're able to do that simultaneously, and each would have their own podium. In the event of a joint meeting with East Grand Forks or any other meeting that would necessitate having more individuals, you could remove those podiums, finish out the circle for increased seating at that, at that dais itself. We talked at length about security as it relates to the city council chambers. So a couple of things that we're investigating, in the event of an active shooter, having safe rooms, which would be the conference room that you see kinda planned south or the AV control room, also investigating a bullet resistant dais itself. And then I mentioned egress earlier, but also having security egress for not only the city council but city staff is what we're looking at, trying to find solutions to. Other miscellaneous items I'll just highlight, I talked about the lobby and expanding that, but you'll see it adjacent to the lobby, because the renovation would take over the existing toilet rooms, we would relocate those to be off the lobby space. We do have to add fixtures to respond to plumbing requirements for this type of assembly If you look around, the existing city council chambers is not fire sprinklered. The 90s addition to city, city hall is fully fire sprinklered. First floor of the original city hall has fire sprinklers, but second and third floor is not currently sprinklered. As a part of this project, it's easy to add that, those fire sprinklers, and so we'll propose doing that. But in addition, that would leave second floor without any fire suppression. So as a part of this project, we're looking at an alternate that we're gonna try to weave in just within the basement of the project to add fire sprinklers to the second floor. When we do that, there's demolition that has to occur with ceilings and things of that nature, and so we'll look at addressing that with the historic nature of that second floor currently. We'll try to raise some ceilings and bring a little bit better design as we modify ceilings to allow for that fire separation. In addition, we also heard, finally, as it relates to the design, the toilet rooms within the rest of city hall, not just on this floor, haven't been updated in 30 years. You have some bathrooms that are in need of some baseline updates, but you also have different fixtures in different toilet rooms. So as an ad alternate, we're looking at renovating all of the restrooms or toilet rooms in city hall. New fixtures, new finishes, that'll provide you consistency with, you know, all of the toilets and sinks and things of that nature, as well as the lighting. So next steps as a part of the project, we've started to engage a steering committee to help lead us and guide us through this process. The steering committee is made up of a couple representatives from city council, department heads are included on that. We have representation from Grand Forks Police Department and the Fire Department. And so we'll be meeting with them on a two or three week basis to run design ideas past them, get their input as we progress through the design of the project. And then on a weekly basis, we'll be working with Brandon Basfug and Adam Jonason, who are kind of the leads on this project, to help guide us through the project as well. Schedule, we will be in the design phases through the end of the 2022 year, and then as, at the turn of the new year, we'll put the project out for bid, which will be a pretty ideal time to get numbers back for the project. So with that, I'll take a pause, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the group.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Webber, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Sean, it's often the case that people will leave council chambers, and it's inevitable that they're gonna have conversations out in the lobby. But the way it's currently set up, it's almost, the sound is almost focused in here at times. Is there any consideration of acoustics between the lobby and the chambers?
I think there's ways that we can handle in that dividing wall to separate the acoustics. It's also in, you know, how the way we set up the doors to operate, so that maybe they're not open all the time. But I imagine the reason we have the doors open now is to have kind of that welcoming feel, so that it feels like a doors open type of meeting. We've talked at length about having a lot of glass to separate the lobby from this space. And so in that scenario, I could see it being totally fine having the doors shut. Everyone knows a meeting is going on and they feel welcome to come in, which might solve some of those problems as well.
I like the symbolism of transparency with all the glass there. The dais here is raised, I don't know, a little over a foot, maybe?
Yeah.
You're talking about eight inches. There's still, there's some need to have the dais raised so that we can see and be seen, but eight inches seems like a more modest level.
One of the pieces of feedback that we heard was, the dais currently, the length of it, the size of it, but also the height of it- of it, the size of it, but also the height of it, provides sort of an intimidating feel to the audience. Eight inches might not be the right answer. It might be plus or minus, but that's something that I think we'll investigate. I think the reason you need to have it raised is, it is important to maintain sightlines for the audience, but also for you guys as well.
Yeah, I'm glad that that's being considered. And then something that I don't believe you mentioned, this think tank off to the side where there's currently a stairwell, talk to me about that. What, how would that be accommodated, and what's the purpose there?
So there is a stair that leads from this space up to the 90s addition. The stair leads to a hallway, and you can see that if you go to the next page here, and I can go there, too. It goes to a hall that takes up a good portion of that think tank. Because we're improving the general egress out of the space as a part of our proposal, we've talked about giving that space back to the think tank to be better programmable space for that room.
And is that a space that would be, the public could come in and reserve? Is that for staff, the purpose of that room?
I think currently it's used for staff training, and I think that would be maintained. It's just adding more space to accommodate that program.
Very good. Thanks.
Any further questions, Mr. Veen?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the questions, I guess I was looking at, have you set it up, I mean, analyzed it from an active shooter standpoint, and the forms of egress that would be necessary safely? The problem we kind of have is we have the two exits kind of off in the corner, and just wondered what analysis you have of that.
I think as we, Mr. Veen, as we progress through the design, I think there's more work to be done there. At a preliminary stage, what was discussed is, the updated dais design would have bullet-resistant properties, so in an active shooter standpoint, first line of defense for whoever's behind the dais would be to drop down below the dais. The second opportunity is if we create safe rooms at either end, at that point, you're allowed to crawl and try to get to refuge. That design needs to be flushed out, and I think that's a priority as we move into the next stage, but that's initial discussions that were had.
More questions? Yeah, Ms. Lunskey.
So right now, you have space for six city staff? It seems like there is more than six, so I think we should look at expanding that.
We did get that comment as well. Circling out the rest of that oval, like I mentioned, I think there may be an opportunity for one or two additional city staff, plus the six that we're showing now, but I do think we need to find that number of what's appropriate. There was other conversations that we had during our user group meetings, such that it might not be necessary for all city staff to be present during meetings, but maybe they could take the meeting from their desk as their topic that they came to discuss comes up. They can come up from their office to the space. And the reason we've positioned city staff, or we have, is they can use that hall that you see just right above their space to enter into the room without disrupting the meeting, so that they can kind of come and go a little bit easier and not, as I mentioned, disrupt the meeting. But I do think through the work that we'll do, identifying what that number is, is going to be important.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, real quick, and then, where would we be meeting while the remodeling is taking place?
Council member, Vice President Weber.
Will we just cancel?
Yes. Google virtual. That was so much fun. No, we are planning, hopefully, we can have our, the Hive or the Grand Force Herald building done, and we would intend to, in the interim, meet in the boardroom. And certainly, we think it'll be substantially complete in November. We need to get the furniture there, too, to complete it, but if this starts, we'll say sometime after, if it gets bid in January, where that means construction likely will start in February, I think we have some time. But our plan right now is to, and it has the highest technology in the boardroom at the Herald, and I think we'll at least have some better broadcasting abilities from that boardroom. But that's our plan right now.
And the boardroom is designed to hold how many?
It's designed to hold about 40 people.
Thanks.
Just a question on, when you're thinking of bidding, and, go ahead.
Yeah, so we would, we'd finish our design this year, mid-December. We would hold until after the holidays and then bid out the first, well, not the first of January, but right after the new year.
Awesome. And you're not intending on touching the envelope of the building, right? We're just, for the most part?
Not as a part of this project. It would be interior only.
Perfect project for early bidding, and
Exactly.
Bidding in January would be great. We've actually seen some really good results for next year, so I'm excited that your timing is, I think, great. This design looks great. Well done.
All right, thank you. Did you have anything further?
No, thank you guys for your time.
All right, thank you for the update. I think that's all for item three. We can move on to four, public hearings, secondary ordinances, which there are none. So move on to five, action items. I know Public Health had asked to have 5.4 polled. We would need to poll 5.5, 5.6, and 5.8. Is there any other items?
5.2.
5.2. Thank you, Ms. Oselsky. Any other items? Council members would like to have polled this even. So I've got polled right now 5.2, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, and 5.8. Hearing none, we'd look to approve then items 5.1, 5.3, 5.7, and 5.9. Got a motion from President Sandy and a second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. If that motion carries on those items, we will move on. So it would be 5.2.
5.2 is approval of the real estate purchase agreement, purchase of Lot 3, Block 1, PNE First Re subdivision to the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, for Project 8485.01, District Number 589, Storm Pond for Highway 81 and associated area.
All right, thank you. Do you have any further comments, Ms. Oselsky, on that item? I did, I did have a question. Where, Oscarville would be probably the most comparable. What was the price paid per acre in that land for that Stormwater Pond?
The information that I got, excuse me, was $20,000 per acre.
$26.
Okay.
Got, we had a motion to approve. We have a second. We have a second from Mr. Weber, a motion from President Sandy, a second from Vice President Weber. Any further comments on item 5.2? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.4, introduction of ordinance and give preliminary approval of the food code update.
Mr. Bedard, please.
Mayor Bucowski, members of the council, I just want to take a minute to highlight an adjustment that's been made to include what I had intended, and I apologize for not having that in your first version. I had spoken to a couple of code sections that would be pulled back, having to do with the inspection intervals and timeliness of corrections. That has been incorporated into your current draft here. Under 130202, there would be subsections 4, 5, and 6. And also included in your packet is the Annex 5, Table 1, that is the risk categories that we had discussed. We are not using 4, as is here. We've combined 3 and 4 together. We find those higher-risk facilities like hospitals and nursing homes do a great job in food education and training. We've combined those with the full-service restaurants as 3. The other part of that that we aren't currently doing is adjusting based on inspection results. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Bedard? Got a motion to approve. We have a second. We got a second from Mr. Veen. All right, any other comments or questions on item 5.4? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.5, bids for Project 8544, District 588, Stormwater Pond Number 1 for Grand Valley First Edition.
All right, Mr. Grasser, please.
Thank you, Mayor Bucowski, City Council. This is the first bid of two that we have coming in tonight. This is the Stormwater Pond for the Grand Valley First Edition. If you recall, this was that new area that's being under development, south of 62nd Avenue South. We opened bids on September 30th. We had six bidders. The bids came in, the low bid came in 23% below the engineers' estimate, so we got good bids. We have a known contractor. You know, we don't have any issues with the bid. We're recommending award of the bid to the low bidder, who was United Crane and Excavation, in the amount of $2,397,505.10.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. What was the reason on this to see such a high estimate and a bid come in so aggressively?
I think the fact that we really got good bids, and early on, when we were, when the engineers were putting some of the bids to develop, you know, inflation was doing this kind of thing at the time, and I think as the engineers were projecting some of the bids that they had been seeing at the time, you know, they were building some of that in, into the cost. And thankfully, we haven't really seen those, all those increases come to manifestation, so we got, we got really good bids.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the council? Got a motion to move approval. We have a second, then we'll open it back up for comment. We have a second from Mr. Veen. Sorry, did you have a comment, Mr. Veen?
Yeah.
Please, Mr. Veen.
Now, how many acres is this pond, and how many acres approximately do you think it covers or drains into it?
This pond, I can't quote the exact acres of the pond itself, but it serves about a quarter section of land. You know, the developers out there own roughly a half a section. And so what they're doing is they're building this pond to serve the southerly quarter, but they're also making provisions within this pond to serve the next pond that's going to serve the next 160 acres. Basically, they're putting in some pipe and stuff so that those, looking ahead, those two can efficiently be connected together, so.
Excuse me. Please don't disrupt the meeting. Mr. Grasser, continue.
So that's basically, I think that
Sir, please do not disrupt the meeting. Mr. Grasser, please continue.
I think that's basically the answer. Again, they're including to serve 300, roughly 320 acres of land, all told.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.6, bids for Project 8485, District 589, Highway 81 and associated regional, area regional.
Mr. Grasser, please.
Okay, this is the second of the bids. This was, this bid was open on September 29th. We had four bidders. The low bid was about 32% below the engineers' estimate. We also, on this bid, we bid two alternatives. One was without SRF, and I'll come back to that. Without, first alternative was with SRF compliant specification and provisions. Alternate 2 was without. But SRF, and I defer to our finance director if we need to, but the SRF is a state revolving loan fund program. We can qualify for low-interest loans. I believe it's about a 2% loan at this point in time. So, but it does carry some provisions because there are some federal components to that. We need to do Davis Bacon and Buy America and different things like that, which have a tendency to raise the cost of the actual project, and you'll see that, you know, in the bids. But again, the loan rate was determined, was analyzed by finance, who was determined that it was attractive to go after those dollars. We don't have a guarantee on them yet, but we're looking at making the project compliant. So from a total cost aspect, you're looking at, you know, the cost of construction, but you're also looking at the cost of financing when you're looking at the big picture. Again, we had a good low bid. We do have a known contractor. We are recommending award of the project, alternate 1, which would include the SRF funding, to the low bidder, which is RJ Zaverell &amp; Sons, in the amount of $1,997,899.20.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grasser. Any comments from, questions from council?
Move approval.
Got a motion approved from Mr. Weber, second from Mr., sorry, from Mr. Weigle, second from Mr. Weber. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 5.8, Project 8338, consideration of alternatives for North 42nd Street Railroad grade, separated crossing, environmental document.
Thank you. Is Mr. Weber still here? No? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Grasser.
Thank you.
Mr. Grasser.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Again, I'll take a shot at this one. The expert is sitting behind me, and we also have Scott Midow on the, on the remote. We had good comments and discussions, you know, at the committee of the whole, and we've continued to have discussions with property, major stakeholders, property owner of the state. We don't have direct talks with Federal Highway, but we get some input through that. You know, I think we've, we've really gotten to the point now, we realize we're all struggling, basically, coming up with, how do we reduce our alternatives down to, you know, one or two options? And I think because of that, we're actually recommending at this point in time that we just, we carry all of the five alternatives forward. And the reason to do that is, as we further define each alternative, I think, you know, the goal is to try to get one or more of the stakeholders to really give us a solid answer as to what we can do. The one really big one that I'm really targeting in my mind is, is we're going to try to get Federal Highway to say, because they're the ones that are probably going to dictate, you know, how much impact we can reasonably have in the golf course under their perception. And so we'd like to really find out, because that in turn drives what's going to happen with the gas station, the property purchase. So it's, I don't know if I can explain it a lot better than that. One of the things that we faced in this project, you remember, 2014, when we had the last go-around in this, we selected two alternatives. Those alternatives pretty heavily impacted the gas station, probably likely buyout scenarios. And the reason for that is because we, under those scenarios, the 4F, and that's a provision of federal law, that basically says, you've pretty much got to exhaust your other reasonable alternatives before you can impact a 4F property. A golf course is considered 4F. So that 4F bar was like here. And then what happened, remember, five or six years ago, when the golf course basically went private, the 4F bar kind of disappeared, and we said, you know, there's probably alternatives out there that we should explore, because we now don't have that restriction. And so we started this thing several years ago, kind of on that premise, and we did. We developed a number of alternatives. You can see them today that, that have some of the impacts to the golf course. What we found, though, is, is in, you know, none of this is particularly official, but, you know, the bar, when it went back to being a public golf course, the 4F kind of came back into the, you know, the analytical lens, so to speak. And when we first started talking about it, it sounded like the bar for 4F was fairly low. It's like, well, we can do some analysis here and there and whatever. But what's happened is, it seems like that 4F bar keeps creeping up. And so it's, it's another one of those moving targets that we're trying to find answers to, that we're having a hard time defining right now, is because there's too many of these things kind of keep moving on a sliding scale. The direction it's going is going to, is suggesting that we, you know, we may start to approach something more like we were a few years back. But again, I don't want to say that. We want to analyze those issues right now and try to, try to find out what our alternatives really are, because in the end, the ability to get selected for project is going to rest, you know, with the DOT and Federal Highway. So they have to have a project that they're relatively comfortable with, because we will be competing with a lot of other very good projects. Everything that goes to the DOT pretty much is a really good project. So how do you differentiate yourself in a positive manner?
All right. Any questions for Mr. Grasser? Have Mr. Veen.
Thank you, Mayor. What will be the public input process through the whole process that we go through here in the next, I mean, we're talking about years out yet at this point in time?
I might defer that to Mr. Karinko. I think it's a lesser timeline than that, but I'll let him speak to that.
Councilmember Veen, we did have a public input meeting on this project, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was, was that last spring? I want to say that was in May. Does that sound right?
June 16.
There you go. So we have already had a public input meeting on this, and that is all part of the environmental document process.
Okay, just, I just wanted to be sure what that process would look like, because I think it'll be, more will unfold as we see and learn more about what the impacts are going to be. I didn't recall that, that public meeting, but each one of these are pretty unique, and I think we need to do a great job evaluating them.
Understood. Thank you.
So at this time, you're going to send the 5 forward. You expect that the feds are going to probably trim this down based on their parameters to going to probably trim this down based on their parameters to a couple. So when it eventually comes back to us, there'll be two, three options. I'll have to weigh further. Is that what's kind of expected at this point?
I prob, my answer to that is not, is, I'm not trying to portray it that Federal Highway, what they will or won't do. What we are trying to do is get them to make a decision. I'm just saying that, that bar tends to be moving up. So it seems like it's, it may be harder to get to. But all of the options are on the table. I think everything is open. What I'm, again, hoping relative to public input, I think if we do get to a point where somebody, one of the agencies starts to eliminate alternatives, then we can go back and get some additional public input. Because right now, even the public has a hard time. It's like, wow, there's, you know, there's a bunch of choices out there. What do I like? Well, I like this one for this reason, that one for that reason, and that one for the other reason. So if they're all options, you know, sometimes it's hard to choose. But if, if the options start coming off the table, I'm not making a specific prediction. Sorry if I gave you that impression. I'm, I'm trying to give you a, a sense of agency movement. So apologize.
But tonight, yeah, but today, we're just moving forward with all the alternatives. So there's not a decision.
That's our recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Weber?
This is a legislative priority for the city, for Team Grand Forks, which includes the county, all of the taxing entities. And you've been included in those discussions all along, and will continue. This is really one of our city's top legislative priorities. Thanks.
All right, any further comments? Mr. Weigle?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Osowski. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 5.8 carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Information items?
Okay, we have several information items that were presented at the meeting last week, but no action is needed. 6.1, Project 8415 Riverside Dam Inspection. 6.2, Project 8540, Federal Funding Request HSIP. 6.3, Project 8540, Federal Funding Request Urban Roads Program. 6.4, Project 8540, Federal Funding Request Regional Roads Program. 6.5, Project 8540, Federal Funding Request Urban Grant Program. And finally, 6.6 Transit Development Plan, all is attached.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to seven, Approval of Minutes and Bills.
7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate, as is presented.
All right, got a motion, motion to approve the vendor's list. Got a motion from Mr. Weber, second from Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on to eight, City Administrator Comments. Mr. Phelan, any comments this evening?
Mayor, which is the city council. I just wanted to highlight our Public Health Director, Debbie Swanson, has announced that she's going to retire in January. So we have a few more months with her. So I want to congratulate her. And not only, she's obviously going to retire as a Public Health Director, but has served many years in, in, in public health and doing some great work. So not only on behalf of the city and the county, on behalf of the region, state of North Dakota, and the country as a whole. So she has done an extraordinary job in her field. The other person, as you recall, Paul Hodak, is going to retire also, in, in a similar way. Paul served not only the city, but his region and also the state of North Dakota. So we're, we're going to lose two incredibly important department heads. And we knew, we're probably two years into a, a three-year or so plan, where we're going to have some department heads that are going to retire. And so the reason why generally we don't have to ask the city council on a Monday night to take a lot of actions on things is because we, you have department head leaders that manage situations. And, and the agenda items that we have on, on city council meetings are, are more legislative and function and not in executive, because you have a terrific team that are delivering services with you. So that'll be a bit of a challenge for us to fill these really experienced posts. And I understand that, because most things turn out well, because we have really good leadership with, in, with really great folks in our departments that are handling things day to day. We do intend on, as we have in prior positions, to bring those positions back as, with new hires as, as contracted positions. And so that'll be a discussion that we'll have to have here again in the, in the near future with these two additional positions. And so I would look forward for that to come sooner rather than later, so that we can get those positions posted and get them filled in time for our new candidate and a new, new, new era of, to new department heads. And I would just anticipate some additional retirements that will come, and, and we'll do in a similar form and fashion. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Moving on to nine, Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments this evening?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Osowski, please.
Okay. So first of all, I was wondering if there was any way that we could discuss maybe live feeding our meetings directly on the city website instead of just Facebook?
Councilmember Osowski, we did talk about that a little bit today. And Mr. Bernstrom is out today. He's out, he'll, wasn't he, will be here. But we will provide a city council committee of the whole update, because I think even Mr. Sandy has brought this up before. Is there other avenues other than just Facebook to deliver that message? So we'll put it on as an informational item for you next week, Monday, at the committee of the whole, so we can have some further discussion. And more importantly, to have John there, hopefully he'll be better, so he can engage in that conversation. And I think it'll fit better into what we're trying to do with the city council chambers in advance of providing other avenues. So thank you for that.
Also, I was wondering if maybe, you know, like this, like Ronald suggested, like maybe we could educate our officers a little bit more. I mean, I don't like waiting for trains longer than 10 minutes. I'm not really sure where we would go or anything like that. But I do think that this should be taken seriously. I mean, it, it is a law, a state law also. So I would like to see maybe them being educated. I'm not really sure. Information on why it's not being enforced, I would like to see that.
And I think that the waits have become longer, just because, you know, when they're, they're getting into the yard, I think they're having to go back and forth to stack the trains in there. And I think it's impacting 42nd into Mers quite a bit. And we want to, we want to put our officers in winning situations. You know, it's one thing to go up to a train to say, you know, you're under arrest or something. I mean, I think we've got to be pragmatic too about, yeah, we should be informed. We should have a BNSF that is community-friendly to have an appreciation of having preparation and all the things that Mr. Reimers did say. But we can certainly, we'll follow up based upon those requests. And it is an ongoing frustration. That's hence why we're perhaps going to spend $50 million for us trying to fix the, the issue. So we're well aware of it. And I, and we have followed up with the yard master, and that was also noted too about their issues. And of course, it always seems simple, like, why do you have to do that? And there's a myriad of reasons for that. And it's a frustration with the UND, it's a frustration with the city, and it's a frustration with the entire community. So well, we'll follow up in that regard.
Okay. I mean, I'd like to continue to have a good relationship with the NSF, but I do think it's important that, you know, they understand the needs of us. I, the thing that really concerns me, which I know the underpass will solve, is the emergency route over to that area of town. I mean, if an ambulance has to wait longer than 10 minutes to even cross there, I, that's sad.
I think on that note, Councilmember Osowski, Mr. Fire Chief Al Lorenz, he's, he's put some maps up. And in that area, in the, in the northwest area of the community, is the most challenged area to serve. And in large part because of that rail. And so we've shown at least kind of some gaps in that area. And so we'll, we'll continue to work on that and keep you updated.
And one other thing, I would like to see going forward, in the staff recommendations, that if a law is referenced, that they actually state what the law is, state the, state the code and the title, so that citizens can go and reference that. I don't know, is that possible, that we do that going forward? Because there was a bullet point in, I believe, item 5.2, somewhere in there, where it said that the project is unprotestable as per state law. But there's nothing, that's even a hard Google search. So I was wondering if going forward, we could actually list what those laws are.
Yeah, we can do that. In that case, it's not protestable, because it's a water-related project. And water-related projects are not protestable. Projects like sidewalks and streets are protestable. But there's a function in the state code where it's essential infrastructure with water. And therefore, formalities, you can't protest it. You can certainly come up here, as, as Mr. Spicer has come up and says, I don't want that stormwater pond. You certainly can do that. And some, some projects like that have been not protested out perhaps. But there's been an engagement with the city council where they haven't moved forward with a water-related project, just because it didn't have to move forward. And, and because of feedback that we moved forward. So we will do a better job in providing more details. And even when we come up here and brief, we will do a better job in briefing the particulars of, instead of just broad brushing comments like that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
All right, Ms. Slonsky, any comments? All right, Mr. Kavami. Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to address some of the concerns and thoughts that I've had over the last many months, having to do with raw water availability. I talked to Mr., emailed Mr. Phelan about how was the best way to do that. And I think the suggestion was that we talk about it in council comments. It's a really complex issue, so it's probably hard to get all the details out in just this type of a format. But I wanted to present and talk about it in enough detail to identify clearly, it needs a lot more discussion and follow-through to see as we go on. I've got, I get questions quite often. Some of them are, people are quite aware of my history in water and water development within the city, with my experience when I was on the city council, or on the city staff as city engineer, public works director, where I worked with garrison diversion. And being the delegate from city council on Lake Agassay Water Authority, I've actually been following the water supply issue since 1995. And have worked, been working on it fairly diligently for all those years, from a number of capacities and points of view. And I think with that experience and all the different consultants and others that I've worked with, one thing that I can say for certain, and that is that predicting raw water availability from the Red River of the North is extremely complex. Some of the studies that we've had come forward have been, have kind of looked at one or two parameters and tried to identify whether there is enough or not, what that, that capacity really is. But to really be able to address it, you, there are hundreds of inputs that are necessary to do the proper evaluation of water supply. It can't be just one, or two, or even three. And, and the only way to realistically do that type of analysis is through a computer simulation with programming that has that capacity to do that. And so we've seen and heard a lot of presentations. In fact, I think we've had five different studies presented over the last six, seven months. And I think water being so critical for the entire city and for all of us personally, I'm just saying, I think we need to take this to another level. And we should be continuing with some level of, of study. With those hundreds of variables, we can, we can somehow look at the impacts to the city now. But I think what's really critical is that when you look at the type of programming that I'm going to talk more about here shortly, you got to also look at something that has the ability to predict future water availability, not just a statistical model or analysis that looks at just a couple of those. And, and the modeling and the assessment of hydraulic conditions, I think it's really critical that we have not only the right, all the inputs, the program that we need to it, but we have the hydrologist that I think has the proper experience to be able to identify the programs, run the variables, and give us the results that are necessary. The agent, the organization that I have worked with, I mentioned that a little bit earlier, one of the primary ones has been the Garrison Diversion Conservancy District. Garrison Diversion was a result of diverting waters behind the Garrison Dam to put to beneficial uses. And even back in the, in the 50s and 60s, it was identified that there was water shortages in eastern North Dakota. I will tell you this much, I have a whole list of all the different federal law studies, et cetera, that have since statehood identified there's water shortages in eastern North Dakota. And I won't go through them all, but I have a full page of them that, that clearly understands and identifies that. And I think we need to bring that home and make sure we understand what that really means for the city of Grand Forks. Garrison Diversion started out using a program that was capable of doing what I just said, called State Mod. They did, started that, I think, in about 2012. And have been using that software in the earlier designing for the Red River Valley Water Supply Project to identify what's the critical nature of water supply, and what do we need to be designing for. In, in 2021, Garrison did a, worked on a completely upgraded State Mod model. And they use that model to, what I think precisely, at least to the best of anybody's ability, predict water availability for Grand Forks. Garrison Diversion again worked with a firm called Wilson Water out of Colorado, who is, specializes in water resource issues, and utilized the updated computer modeling. And were able to put the inputs in to come up with what I believe is the most realistic analysis of water availability, above and beyond anything we've ever had to date. That model did report out that Grand Forks has severe yearly shortages if a 30-style drought were to happen in the foreseeable future. That drought would, Grand Forks would experience anywhere, every year in a 10-year drought of the, of the 30s, a repeat, would have anywhere from nine to 69% shortage of water. That's even after implementing all of our, our drought mitigation measures and the like. There would be significant drought impacts. Now, a lot of the water we get comes through the Red River. And you could imagine over the years, through population shifts, industry uses, all of that has changed. And the nice thing about this model, it's taken into account that change that's occurred over the years. Plus, it's also looked at what anticipated future changes, including population growth, industrial usage, and the like. And so I think we need to do an idea, do some additional work for sure about what that means for Grand Forks, what the risks are that we might be taking, and how we might address those risks. Because without question, I think we're at risk. I think we're at risk now. The more we add to it, the more extreme those risks might be. I have looked at all of the different presentations and modeling that's been presented so far. I'm choosing not to necessarily go through each one of them, but there are issues within each, each presentation and study that's been presented that, for me, are concerning. Now, the one thing I want to admit now, before everybody here, is I'm not hydro, I'm not a hydrologist. I'm a registered professional engineer with a lot of experience. But I don't have the expertise of a hydrologist who would probably be able to answer these questions even better. But I do think that some of that education and experience has been lacking. And I do have this much to say, this study has been done under that appropriate technical and ability to be able to understand, or to be able to identify. The, the report has been completed. It's available, and is certainly there for sharing. The report has been completed, it's available, and is certainly there for sharing. That is the report done through Garrison. And I'm really trying to make sure that we, as a City Council, have the best available data as we make decisions, and I think this is a critical data point that we should be aware of. And realistically, I don't think I've said anything that should be, that could be questioned, although there may be those that would, but it's tried to be as factual as I can about the true impacts of what's going on here with water. I've believed this for a long time, I've never had this kind of data to date to support what we originally thought was a real issue. The net result was, I was told, is our shortage is much more severe than had been earlier anticipated, and anyway, the idea is that we need to get that information out and further study. I very briefly mentioned to Mr. Sandy when he left, that we need to talk more about that, and maybe we'll get a chance to do that, I wish he were here. He did ask that I take a look at some of the earlier studies, and try to give my feedback on those studies. I gladly do that, because I've gone through all of them fairly completely, and I think that my thought and idea was, is we need to get that out and have that discussion. And with that, I'm open to any questions anybody may have.
If I may, yeah, Ken, you started off saying this is a complex set of issues. The study that you referred to, hasn't that already been made available to council members and the public?
Not that I'm aware of. Back in end of April, early May, there was a fairly significant study document that was, that's been presented. That specific document, I'm not aware, has been distributed.
I was thinking of the map that showed areas of water scarcity, potential water scarcity. That's not the study you're discussing?
No, 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 no. This one here is, I've seen that one map, but this is an entirely different, different study.
Mayor Bochenski and Councilmember Vean, Mr. Birian has been here to provide, he provided an executive summary of that study that Mr. Vean is referencing. We also administratively did ask for a couple other graphics that were created, and so when Wilson Water is referenced in State Mod, Mr. Birian was here to present those outcomes of that study. And so he certainly has been here, wants to present that. He came here as a follow-up, Mayor Bochenski had some additional, you know, things that he wanted to look at. And then Mr. Birian will be here again too, because we're going to have the partnership agreements regarding the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. And within that partnership agreement, we'll have the various requirements that we're asking from the city of Grand Forks, and a lot of that is derived from that model. So I would say between now and the session starting, you're going to have some opportunities to further engage, not only on the model itself, but on the partnership agreement that we're going to have, along with the city of Fargo and others.
Thanks.
If I could add further to that, and Mr. Phelan is absolutely correct in what he said, the, those specific studies, though, that Mr. Birian presented, were based on inputs that he came up with. They're not studies that are either endorsed by Garrison Diversion or Lake Agassay Water Authority. And they were presented as such, but you can work with, or I've talked to the manager of Garrison Diversion, and without question, those are internal studies, not official studies by that organization. And the reason why is there's some changes to the inputs, some of them which I definitely disagree with, and will stand behind those changes, not be something that I would ever recommend.
Let me make a few comments or questions, and have you respond to that, Ken. Garrison and State Mod have identified likely crisis years in our future in terms of water availability. For that reason, we've long included the Red River Valley Water Supply Project as a legislative priority. But I've also, I believe, that during crisis years, we're all going to be in trouble without any particular industrial projects in our future. And I've been reassured that residential will always take priority over industry, and that, more specifically, these kinds of details would be worked out in the utility contract with any future industrial user, whether that's Fu Fang or the nitrogen plant, et cetera, that that's where these details would need to be worked out. And that's my comments. Would you reflect on that?
Well, the shortages that have been identified, when I said went from 9% to 69%, there will be months in the summer when we will be 100% short. And that means residential is going to be impacted in time of drought. That's what the outcomes currently show. And so the, one of the solutions, and why I've worked on it so long, is the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. I mean, that is very clear. Right now, that's a $1.4 billion project. It's been, I've been working on it for well over, I don't know, 15 years or whatever, besides my whole experience. And it's, the funding that it's currently receiving is probably only enough to keep up with inflation, not to build it. The project is so massive, it's 168 miles of 72-inch pipeline, buried seven and a half feet deep. It's, it's just a massive project. I feel, I'm actually excited that the certain actions are taking place, but there's no certainty. That's the problem that I have, is the risk involved with no certainty.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vean. Do you have any further comments, Mr. Weber? Any comments, Vice President Weber?
Yes, please, if I may. I was elected by the residents of Ward Three, and I try to listen and reflect on comments from the well-informed and the ill-informed, those that I agree with and those that I disagree with. And while I have a focus on issues affecting the ward, I try to make decisions for the entire city, both for today and for tomorrow. And for that reason, Representative Lunskey and I are working on putting together a joint Ward Three, Ward Four Town Hall meeting sometime in the next month or so. We know that we have been welcomed to Phoenix Elementary to host that, and we're working on the date certain, and that'll be announced sometime in the future. Beyond that, quickly, like, I'm hoping, Mr. Phelan, that there will be a greater opportunity for us to celebrate the work of Mr. Hodak and Ms. Swanson at future meetings.
We will, and we should probably host somewhat of a reception for them too, so we will celebrate. We don't do enough of that.
Very good, very good. With that, I'll try to keep it very brief, but Mr. Hodak has helped defend the city from various fishing expeditions. It seems like every year for the last 10 years, we've had some outside lawyer come in representing big-box stores, asking for huge reductions in the property tax, and his quiet, respectful manner in terms of informing council members and then standing up for the city and its assessment processes has been wonderful, and it's served the citizens of the city very well. Ms. Swanson, I don't have time tonight to talk about everything that you've done, but long before any of us had heard, most of us had heard of COVID, you had already been doing amazing things for the city. I think we'd been working on a social sobriety, social addiction issue, a center for maybe decades, and I remember the meeting where all of that work seemed to come together, and we were finally going to accomplish it, and it was at risk of falling apart, and you stepped up and said, "We'll take this on." And in very short time after that, with little fanfare, you made that dream a reality, and it's impacted, had a tremendous positive impact on many lives in our community, both for individuals and their families. And of course, that's just one example of the work that you had done, even before our country entered the very worst time for public health officials, certainly in my life's experience. The thousands of people, of public health workers who died across our country each year over the last couple of years is one of the unsung stories of our nation's history. And you were doing that work at a time when you were being attacked by various individuals, and not always receiving the support that you deserved from City Council. Thank you for your work, and I look forward to having an opportunity to celebrate more of that work in greater detail in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a few comments. Want to thank everybody again for coming and sharing their thoughts. Tonight was a little special, I haven't got, my family hasn't come since the inauguration of the swearing-in, so thank you for coming. I know it's a big sacrifice, and I think the kids are well-behaved, so I think it's because of the audience today, so everyone might need to come home with me to help make sure that they're always that well-behaved. Also, just on a personal, my wife's probably going to kill me, but if you could just keep our family, your thoughts and prayers, her father suffered a stroke over the weekend, and he's in rough shape, so kind of part of the reason they're here today, we're going to go have dinner afterwards, and it's always tough, so keep that in mind, that life's short, and keep your family members close, because at the end of the day, that's what you got. So with that, look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. They're adjourned.[1767.46]